So I'm sorry to report there are several people to remember tonight. First, a couple of people associated with city employees. Barbara Serbone, who's the mother of our treasurer Julie Langarand and Kathy Leo in the auditor's office. She passed away in late January. Tom Harkins, Tony Fornari's father-in-law. He actually passed away before the new year, and we just got word of that here in the clerk's office. George Cashman, longtime resident, class of '69 at Newburyport High School and grandson of former mayor Cashman up there on the wall by the door. And then there were two obituaries recently in the Daily News of Newburyporters that I want to go into some detail on. You really should read these obituaries. Doug McBurney. McBurney was Newburyport class of 1950, three-sport letterman, served in Korea, served on the city council, Ward Six councillor, and on the zoning board, and he's passed away in Florida recently. And Peg Rice. Her son was a police officer, retired some years ago, Teddy Rice, but she moved up here from New York City and was very involved in the PTO at the Brown School and the old Jackman. So let's have a moment of silence for all of these people we've lost. Thank you. Thank you.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call for the meeting of February 10th. Councilor Lane.
Here.
Councilor McCauley.
Here.
Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tontar.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Wallace.
Present.
Councilor Zied.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
Present.
Councilor Devlin is late, but on his way. Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor Agon.
Here.
We have 10 present. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any late file items?
There are no late file items, Mr. President.
All right. I would comment. Three speakers tonight. I'll call your name, and if you could please come up to the mic, give your name and address for the record. Muhayal Portman is first.
Hi, my name is Muhayal Portman, and I would like to be considered to serve on the Human Rights Committee of Newburyport. I would like to say a couple of words about myself. I was born in former Soviet Union, but since '98, I worked with American nonprofits on human rights issues in Central Asia and later on in Middle East. I always was devoted to empowering youth, women, and promote democracy in those countries. So this is my fifth year in Newburyport, and I'm very much thankful that we're living in this wonderful community, and I want to serve, sort of to pay back and serve local community now. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you. Ken Swanton, 10 Tremont Street.
Hi, I'm Ken Swanton, 10 Tremont Street, Newburyport. I was, I'm a candidate for the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm, a little bit about myself, I spent a long time in the high-tech industry. I'm retired now. Before I moved to Newburyport, for many years, I volunteered for municipal boards. I just liked doing it. This is for the towns of Harvard and Bolton, Massachusetts, which are about 40 miles to the west. I spent a lot of years on the planning board. I was on the school committee when my kids were smaller, conservation, historic, other boards. Finally, was on the board of selectmen for a couple of terms. And my philosophy on town boards is the most important thing to do is to listen to each other and to the public. To be fair, to claim a board like Zoning Board of Appeals. And teamwork, because I think everything I've noticed that's gotten done in municipal government is always done by teams, in my opinion. I've never served on a zoning board of appeals, so it would be fun, new and different. I've been to, I've read through your zoning code, and I've been to some of the zoning board hearings, and I can see they play a key role, and I, it's an honor to be considered for it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And Peter McNamie, 9 Otis Place.
Hello, I'm Peter McNamie, 9 Otis Place. I've applied for a position on the Historical Commission. My wife Kelly and I moved to Newburyport in 1991, and we were drawn to Newburyport, or I was drawn to Newburyport particularly because of the historic character of this city. It's the gorgeous architecture and the variety of architecture to be found. I had a hobby many years ago. I'm not a professional architect. I work in construction, but I'm not an architect. I had a hobby. I belong to the National Historic Trust and whatnot, memberships, and just, I loved studying old architecture. And I think, I see this as an opportunity to give something back to the city that's really, we owe so much to. We raised our kids here, and we've had a wonderful time here, and I'd like to be, have an opportunity to give some of that back. I have attended Historical Commission meetings, just to observe how things go there. It looks like something that I would be able to contribute to. I believe in protecting the character of the city's architecture. I also believe in a certain amount of progress. So I'm not a purist necessarily. I like to just respect what is already there and build upon it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for public comment. Mayor's comment.
Mr. President, I am a member of the city council. To talk about a couple of items on your agenda tonight, you have a revised fee proposal for coming from the Harbor Master and the Harbor Commission. It's been many, many years since we've adjusted those fees, and they're asking for your consideration as you review those. We also anticipate there could be another round of fee adjustments coming in as we're looking at some of the fees in the Building Department. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. You have a communication, your packet tonight from Molly Attenborough regarding the Waste Stream Ad-Hoc Committee, which the original ordinance that was worked on for about 18 months was not carried over in the last term, and so they're asking for your input in terms of that. Most of you have had a chance to vet that proposal, and Molly would appreciate by March 9th if he could send your comments, concerns, and suggestions or other ideas that you would like this task force to work on. We really do need to move forward on this, this term, and figure out what we're going to do to try and contain the costs that continue to escalate every month on our tonnage. I sent you the packet today from DEP and an attachment to an email regarding the final closure certificate for Crowley Landfill. Some of you were part of the stakeholders group that we met with members of DEP, the attorney from the Office of the Attorney General, and members of Blue Wave were there, and we had an opportunity to ask a variety of questions. So they responded to some. My outstanding concern continues to be what will happen should New Ventures not meet the two-week, 30-day, 60, 90-day timeline. So I've asked DEP if they would keep me informed whether or not they do or do not meet those timelines, and then what the consequences are. So we're not there yet, but at least we're finally at closure. The rail trail, there's a detailed summary of where we are. Jordy was back out there today. We do, as I mentioned previously, believe in our contingency enough at the moment to get through this next round of cleanup, but you can read some of the additional details regarding the cleanup. We've talked about this at almost update and really hoping that they can finally, with their confirmatory testing, determine that the site is now clean enough that we can go forward. I wanted to let you know that we did receive the appraisal for 57 Low Street, and we're very, very pleased. The initial appraisal didn't look quite as good as the number that I'm going to talk about today, but they're asking for $220,000 for the 2.1 acre site, which I think is an excellent price for us. We have eight proposals. We've narrowed it down to four that we will be reviewing on Thursday to continue the feasibility study, and we'll let you know the outcome of that meeting on Thursday. The engineer from Highway Safeties Insurance Company was on site last week and to take a look at what's happened to High Street, and I think you can see from the pictures that Jamie Tucalo provided that we can already see some deterioration, and we are happening there. The Joppa Boat Ramp Project is going forward. This is something we've been working on for many, many years, and I thank Lisa Reed for her advocacy there, working with the neighborhood, because originally they were going to, I guess, decrease the size significantly of this ramp, much to the dissatisfaction of the many people who use that. So the site width, I believe, is going to be retained, and that project should be completed by the end of May. We are winding down on a small crowdfunding grant project that we had, again, looking at how we can better view signage for visitors, tourists coming to our city, and there'll be more information forthcoming on the results of that. C-10 Research, the watchdog and monitor of the nuclear power plant in Seabrook, has relocated to the Chestnut Street Innovation Center, and Amesbury was there for their, you know, sort of ribbon-cutting, if you will, and they will continue to have a beacon in Newburyport. We're working that out with Mark Kavanaugh to continue monitoring the plant. I wanted to thank all of you who came to participate and listen to the State of the City last week. I think overall, we've accomplished an awful lot in the past decade, and I thank all of you for being part of that presentation. Last week also, John Eric and members of his engineering team were at the Senior Community Center with Livable Streets, Rick Tainter. I'm very pleased that Livable Streets has stepped up and will, has offered to help work with this ad hoc group to see if we can improve pedestrian and bicyclist safety on Hale Street. The Merrimack River District Commission, their last meeting was held on last Thursday, and, you know, talked about the plans that we have going forward for various subgroups and steer committees and data collection, and just putting together the amount of data that has been collected on the river, and that Newburyport has been identified through funding that Senator DiZoglio obtained for us to become a pilot for notification, and we have a lot of work to do between now and the close of this fiscal year to implement that notification center. Today, we had a nice event in the city council chambers where Jim LaFontaine, who has, I think he's working all over New England for the owner-donor program, and he came and did a little presentation with three recipients of the awards, awards of the organs or their family, and really gave some heart-wrenching stories. So Friday is the day that we are really going to push to, and hopefully the Daily News was here, they'll do pictures and want to raise awareness that all you have to do is go to the RMB, and you can check off a little box, and you become a tissue or organ donor, and it's really important to do that. On Friday, Donna Musumeke represented the city at the North of Boston Tourism. You can read a little bit about that in my update. And then I'm giving part two of the State of the City, which is a little more focused on economics for the chamber on Thursday morning at 7:30. If you're so inclined to come again, just please let Donna know, and we'll get to, into one of our tables that we have reserved. So thank you.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Yes, Councilor Khan.
Yes, Mayor. In terms of the Livable Street presentation on John Eric's on the public access and safety on Hale Street, is that available on the city's website, or can I, for those of us who aren't able to film?
I'm sure we can figure that out. I know that the previous slides were up there, but I don't, I'm not sure that they, those have been posted yet, but I can have Matt check with John Eric tomorrow and get that up on the DPS website.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for January 27th. There are no transfers. There are no communications. There are three appointments. Appointment 144, Christine Farrell, 28 Spofford Street, to the Disabilities Commission until February 10th, 2023. Appointment 145, Muhayal Portman, 146 High Street, to the Human Rights Commission until February 10th, 2023. Next appointment, 146, will go to Planning and Development Committee. That is not broken out as it should be. Ken Swanton, 10 Tremont Street, to the ZBA until February 10th, 2021. The following are items that are removed from their respective committees. First Budget Finance Committee, a transfer 67, Communication 222. Public Safety Committee, the following are removed. Communication 198, 218, 223, 224, and 225, and Appointment 140. From Public Utilities Committee, the following are removed. Communication 206 and Order 165. And that is the consent agenda with that change to Ken Swanton going to Planning and Development. Motion to approve.
Counselor Khan.
Well, I was going to do point of order, more for clarification. Council President, do we need to remove Appointment 146 so that our minutes can more appropriately reflect that we're referring to Planning and Development?
Might as well. Why don't we remove that clerk and take it up in the regular agenda?
Yeah, motion to remove then Appointment 146.
It just takes one counselor. Any one counselor, it's okay. So it's out. Are there any other changes before, okay, then is, do we have unanimous consent? Motion? Can I take a motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Consent agenda is done. Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Communication 227.
If I could, Mr. President, I also want the record to reflect that Counselor Devlin has joined.
Thank you.
Communication 227, in the regular agenda, is an update request from the Waste Stream Task Force from Molly Attenborough to the City Council President. As the mayor mentioned in her update, the memo is to provide a brief update on the efforts by the Waste Stream Task Force, presented to the City Council and to be presented February 2019. I'm sorry, were presented.
Well, if I may, sorry. I was just going to suggest that, first of all, everybody read it, but it imposes a deadline. I mean, what really this is, is a request for the 11 of us to give input. So the deadline you heard in the mayor's report is March 9th. Typically, we try to turn things around in 15 days, so if you could do that, that would be, that would be great. Counselor Khan.
Motion to refer to public safety. I would, second.
Second. Discussion. Oh, well, first the motioning, Counselor Khan.
Great, thank you, Council President. I also am on the Waste Stream Task Force, and this was actually, we started convening again at the start of this year, and one of the things that seemed to organically come out of our discussion is being able to come back to this body and the public in terms of making it very obvious in terms of what issues we're trying to look at as we're revising and reconsidering what might be the next step moving forward. So the reason I'd like to refer to public safety is so that it could give an opportunity for the public as well, so it's not just for city councilors to put together their questions, but I'm just really thinking one meeting, have the public know about it as well if they want to come, and we could have myself, Molly, there as well, and people could then hear what we're thinking, but at the same time, provide what they'd like this group to also focus on and address. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Zied.
Yeah, I'll just be opposing referring this to committee. I think this is a candidate for receive and file. As most folks know, I've been an advocate for controlling the city council's workflow and how we do things, and referring things to committee when it makes sense. This is a request essentially to each of us individually to provide input, and I don't think sending a committee and sort of something that's sort of more abstraction makes sense. So I would, I would prefer to receive and file. That's going to be it for me.
Counselor Wallace.
As a member of the Public Safety Committee, I agree with the counselor at large that this would just be an opportunity to have everybody kind of refresh their memory, and it also asks for input from the new counselors, and it so happens on the Public Safety Committee, it's all three new counselors, so it would just be another opportunity to share information. Thank you.
Other counselors? Any further debate? A question on the floor is whether to refer to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. I believe it is 10 to 1. It is referred. What do we have next? We have...
Second reading of the appointment, Mr. President.
Okay, let's do, let's do that. Well, yeah, shouldn't we do the first reading for Ken Swanton, who was polled?
We could do that first.
Okay. So if you could read the Ken Swanton, Appointment 146?
146, 10 Tremont Street, to the Zoning Board of Appeals until 210, 2021.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is referred. Next item.
This will be appointments, the second reading of Jean Costello, 522 Merrimack Street, to the Human Rights Commission until 11, 2023.
On second reading? Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call for the appointment of Jean Costello. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Agon.
Yes.
Counselor Agon.
Yes. Okay, on to anything else from Chair Tontar.
Motion to receive and file Communication 222, fiscal year 220, mid-year budget review.
Second.
Counselor Tontar.
So the purpose of the mid-year budget review is to examine where we are in the budget halfway through. Of course, the budget is a, is a projection of expenditures and revenue, so one thing that we look at, generally you would expect that both would be around 50% halfway through the year. So the general fund, in terms of expenditures, is 47.8%, water 50.7%, sewer 41.5%, and Harbor Master 57.8%. Of course, there are differences. The Harbor Master, a lot of its expenditures come in, you know, during the summer, which starts July 1st in the fiscal year, so it spends more. On the revenue side, in the general fund, we've collected 48.3%, water 53.9%, sewer 52.3%, Harbor Master 51%. All right? So generally, the committee did not see anything that raised a red flag in terms of either expenditures or revenue. There are eight departmental or cost centers that were well above the 50%, and the finance director provided explanations for each. For instance, you know, Board of Registers was above, and because we had two elections in the fall, retirement is 100% because we pay on July 1st, and those are in the, in the communication. We anticipate about $600,000 in transfers, which will come out of free cash. Fire overtime, a little more than had been budgeted for because of illness and injury, higher than anticipated. The snow and ice, as usual, as usual, purchase of fuel and oil, that's always a transfer that we do because of the way we do accounting. We might perhaps change that. Legal, 55,000 because of Waterfront West, because of High Street, and because of the home rule petition. Parks, we just did the Brown School fence. And Human Resources is, there's a, likely going to be a request for $8,500 to increase staff. They are currently sharing a staff person... The funds, by the way, came out of a legal settlement on Lime Street, and so this seems to me that since it stays in the neighborhood, it's... The Lime Street development was an insult to the neighborhood, and this adds something back to the neighborhood, so it seems fitting to me.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, I'd like to note that I'd like to be a sponsor for this. As we have in our rules, transfers have to have a sponsor, so that's in my work. Yes, sir, Counselor Tontar?
I'll sponsor it.
Okay, co-sponsored.
Yeah, Mr. President, I... The finance director and I had a discussion, and I said that I would be willing to sponsor anything from the finance department just to get it on the floor, so...
Okay. So, that'll be our practice going forward?
Sometimes he didn't quite remember to put that...
Okay.
Default rule, no chew.
Yep. Yeah, if he doesn't remember, you might remember.
Anything's possible.
I'd like to have a roll call on this one, just because it's money.
Got a comment here, Mr. President?
Sorry.
Thank you, Council President.
I just... This is now just logistics. Does that mean the budget transfer request form will include also a sponsor line item, so that we can see that, or...
Well, going forward, yes, I think...
So, I would suggest that we have that, because it might not always be the counselor from the at-large counsel.
Right. Okay, yeah, so going forward, just so everyone knows, transfers will be... Can be sponsored by any counselor. We're going to go with the default rule as a courtesy to Ethan Manning, that Counselor at Large Tontar will be the default sponsor, but that shouldn't preclude anyone else.
Very good.
Okay, so, it would take a roll call just on dispersing these funds, because it's from a legal settlement, I just think it'd be better to do it that way.
Roll call for Transfer 67, motion to approve. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Ragman?
Yes. Okay, onto anything else from Chair Tontar.
Motion to receive and file Communication 222, fiscal year 220, mid-year budget review.
Second.
Counselor Tontar.
So, the purpose of the mid-year budget review is to examine where we are in the budget halfway through. Of course, the budget is a projection of expenditures and revenue, so one thing that we look at, generally you would expect that both would be around 50% halfway through the year. So, the general fund, in terms of expenditures, is 47.8%, water 50.7%, sewer 41.5%, and Harbor Master 57.8%. Of course, there are differences, the Harbor Master, a lot of its expenditures come in, you know, during the summer, which starts July 1st in the fiscal year, so it spends more. On the revenue side, in the general fund, we've collected 48.3%, water 53.9%, sewer 52.3%, Harbor Master 51%. All right, so generally, the committee did not see anything that raised a red flag in terms of either expenditures or revenue. There are eight departmental or cost centers that were up well above the 50%, and the finance director provided explanations for each, for instance, you know, the board of registers was above, and because we had two elections in the fall, retirement is 100% because we pay on July 1st, and those are in the communication. We anticipate about $600,000 in transfers, which will come out of free cash. Fire overtime, a little more than had been budgeted for because of illness and injury, higher than anticipated. The snow and ice, as usual, purchase of fuel and oil, that's always a transfer that we do because of the way we do accounting, we might perhaps change that. Legal, $55,000 because of Waterfront West, because of High Street, and because of the home rule petition. POCs, we just did the Brown School fence. And Human Resources is... There's likely going to be a request for $8,500 to increase staff. They are currently sharing a staff person with payroll, and that creates a little bit of a problem, because the Human Resources ought not to be, you know, working out of the payroll department, so it's best to separate them out, so just... That hasn't come yet, likely to come. On the revenue side of it, motor vehicle excise taxes is up 30.2%. That's because, you know, generally, the excise taxes that all of us would have our cars for a while pay usually comes in the next month or so, right? So, this is people buying new cars in Newburyport, so we get more revenue. Room occupancy tax revenue is up 27.1%, and we think that's because of short-term revenue, short-term rental revenue that has come in as a result of passage of state law. Then, other than that, building permits were down 32K, but road opening permits, health permits, fire permits were up and more than made up for that decrease. Investment incomes up 12%. And the water fund is down by 3.1% due to low-flow fixtures, and, you know, we increased the rate by 1% this year, so that's a little down, that's a continuing trend. People are using less water, which is a good thing, but we, you know, have to pay for the infrastructure. So, again, it was a 3-0 vote to recommend that we receive and file.
Further debate from counselors. Seeing none. Oh, yes, Counselor Devlin.
Mr. President, to the chair, just, was there any discussion, and specifically, I'm just curious, the fire overtime, whether that was an unusual figure? It was noted by the planning director, and then just the POCs Commission supplies, which is sort of the sizable number there, was at 79.2%. I'm just wondering if there was any discussion of that at the meeting.
Counselor Tontar? Well, on the fire department, we did, I mean, what I reported earlier is basically what we were told, that there are a higher number of injuries and absences for other purposes, illnesses, than they had anticipated.
So, that is unusual.
So, they're anticipating that, you know, they'll need a transfer. The POCs Department, supplies, we did not discuss that in committee.
May I ask, Counselor Devlin, what is the amount of money that went up 79%?
Yeah, so the overall in the POCs Department was only 53% and some change, so that... But, and then there's three categories in the middle that were 78.8, 79.2, and 73.3. Of those three, the only sizable amount was the $44,300 for supplies, you know, we're 80% into that supplies, and I'm assuming that in the spring, you'll need some supplies, or maybe not, maybe they do all their buying in the spring, I mean, in the fall.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, debate? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to receive and file, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's received and filed. Anything else from Budget and Finance?
Just a couple, we had two other measures that we discussed in committee. One was Communication 226, which is a letter from Mr. Jim McCarthy requesting a financial inquiry, we discussed it, we are holding that in committee, and we will undertake investigation, and we have a set of questions that was provided by the Ward 1 counselor that we intend to pursue. We also considered Transfer 68, which is a transfer of $50,000 from free cash to a design and feasibility study for Fire Station Number 2. We are holding that in committee, a number of people came and spoke to that. The, as the council and the public may be aware, the city has determined that we need to station Substation 2, the cutter station, it needs to be replaced for public safety reasons, for one thing, and given the deterioration. The city did, we approved $75,000 in the last session to do a feasibility study for replacing the station in its current location. The building committee, and I should note, there's some controversy as to how that building committee was selected, I was on it, and Counsel Junta was on it, and the mayor, so the councilors and mayor, when we saw the price tag on that, we kind of balked and said, oops, wait a minute, maybe we should rethink this, and so, at that point, the notion was to look for another site, see if we could save costs, for one thing, that site's very small, we'd have to build up to a second floor, that adds costs, and also, to build on that site, we would have to find a place to put Station 2 while the construction work was being done. So, what we had before the committee was a $50,000 transfer to, you know, do a feasibility study, plus some other things on the piece of land across from C and J. So, in committee, we're holding it, we asked for a copy of the previous feasibility study, and I don't think we have an actual physical, Matt can speak to a physical copy of that study, I think we received a spreadsheet with some numbers on it, which caused us to balk, and an oral presentation, but the administration is going to be trying to pull together some more information. We're probably not going to act on this until we get that information. That's it.
Comments? Counselor Zied?
Yeah, just very briefly on that topic, I think, just to put maybe a sharper point on it, from my perspective, I'm frustrated that we were asked to fund another 50 grand for another study, when there really are no formal results of the previous study. I was expecting or anticipating that upon request for that study, we would be provided it basically instantly, you'd think if you paid 75,000 or 60,000, you'd at least get a report out of it, especially one that would justify not just potentially looking at another site, but also potentially relocating headquarters, which I think is a pretty big decision. So, I'm expressing my frustration, obviously, as the chair said, it's going to stay in committee, and we will have more time to deliberate on it, but I want to urge my colleagues that we need to kind of get involved in this, it's probably one of the biggest capital projects right now in the city, and with all due respect to the building committee, the city council needs to get his hands dirty on this one early, to understand what the factors are and how we're going to arrive at a decision. Thank you.
I spy Chief of Staff, Matt Coogan. Matt, would you be willing to... What more materials do you think will be forthcoming?
I think, excuse me, I think our intention is to provide all materials necessary for the city council to make an informed decision. Going back, and Counselor Tontar kind of covered this a little bit, we have different tasks that were part of the feasibility study. We were about to finalize the cost of replacing the station on its current state, and we kind of pulled, for better, worse term, pulled the plug and took a step back, and figured out whether there's other sites available. So, that information, we will provide to the council, I think it just needs to be put in a digestible, deliverable, like the Task 1 was, which was given, I believe, to the Budget and Finance Committee last week, which was, the Task 1 was about the current condition of the existing site. We owe the council the next task, which is the actual, next iteration of replacing the station on that current site, and I think it was just an oversight on our part that we had thought that information was provided, and we're happy to provide that.
So, there are drawings? There are plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, conceptual plans, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Is anything else from Budget and Finance tonight?
Hold on, Mr. President.
Okay, Committee on Education, Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The Committee on Education met on February 3rd, and we had also intends the superintendent and the mayor. Our budget item, or our items for discussion included the budget, and we had a kind of walkthrough by the superintendent on their process, which they explained starts in December of last year. And one of the things that was interesting is that these initial budget books are put together, where different, the school council, in coordination with the leadership teams, identify their needs, and then what comes out of that, we were, counselor, the counselor from Ward 1 was asking, well, how could we see a little bit more of those initial budget book kind of requests? So, while the superintendent did share that there are aspects, when he provides the different kind of columns of, if we had this percent, this percent, or this percent, here's what we could add, we also thought it would be good to have some narrative when they do present that to us, so we could get a better picture. That discussion will be continuing, we just had a short time on it, because we do have an hour that we meet before the school committee. Other things we addressed were the capital improvement plan, and the school committee that night was getting a presentation from Steve Bergholm on what is going to be in the CIP for schools. At our next meeting, which is going to be on March 3rd, or March 2nd, my apologies, March 2nd, he will be there to actually walk through these projects, so I encourage any counselor who's interested to please attend, if you want me to make it committee of the whole, I can entertain that as an option, but that will be a time when us counselors can ask a little bit more about the larger ticket items, of which what the mayor talked a little bit about, which was a joint request through the Massachusetts School Building Authority to fund the high school roof, as well as an expanded STEM section of the high school. And I am taking notes and trying to post them, they are in draft format, and one of the things procedurally is, we do, we will approve the notes at the next meeting on March 2nd, but I do have a draft one on our city page right now. Thank you.
Any questions for Chair Khan on her report? No, okay. General Government, I regret to pull the plug on our meeting with the city solicitor on the 12th. Unfortunately, the mayor has had a exigency that she can't control, she has to go to a funeral and won't be able to join us, so we need to find another date. I'm hopeful we could do it just next week instead, so if people could pull out their calendars, they give it a try.
Can't do that Wednesday, I'm in Pittsburgh at 6:00.
Okay. All right, so Monday's President's Day, so that's out. How about Tuesday, the 18th?
I'm in Dallas, I get back from Dallas that night.
I'm out that whole week.
I got the whole week.
That's right, I forgot, it's vacation week.
That's right. Well, maybe we should put it out until the week of the 24th, you think? So, we have a council meeting that Monday, the 24th. I'm going to be bold and throw out the 26th, Wednesday, the 26th.
That's a chamber pot of Lower Atkinson.
All right, so much for that, Tuesday, the 25th.
25th is good with me. Good here.
All right, let's do that.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM again. Byron, did you...
I can't, I have a work function I have to be at.
That whole night?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. I'd really like to have everybody there if I can.
What did I say again, Jay?
That was going to be Tuesday, the 25th.
How about Thursday, at 6:00? Budget and Finance almost meets at 6:30. I really need you guys. We could switch it, but...
Could meet at 7:00.
Could we do it before the charter meeting? Charter meeting's at 7:00. We're going to do it at 6:00 anyway.
Charter meeting's at 7:00 on the 26th? Could we do it at 6:00?
It's a public hearing at 7:00 in the senior center. Lower Atkinson kickoff.
Could we have this meeting at the senior center?
We could, yeah. Why don't we do that?
Why not Thursday at 6:00 and have Budget and Finance at 7:00?
Well, that's up to the chair, he's already scheduled, he's locked in. Chair Tontar, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Yes.
Okay, so Thursday, the 20th, this is my final offer, so Thursday, the 27th, at 6:00 PM. All right, please, please put that in, and I'll check with the mayor.
Hey, where are we?
Thursday, the 27th, at 6:00 PM, public meeting of the Committee on General Government and Committee of the Whole.
Mm-hmm.
I will confirm that.
The location?
Here.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought you were talking about this, community center. 6:00, did you say? Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, we can meet here.
Well, I, before, would you...
No, no, Budget and Finance usually meets here, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I had in General Government. Committee on Licenses and Permits, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Committee on Neighborhood and City Services.
Nothing at this time.
Committee on Planning and Development, Counselor Shan.
So, just an update, we did meet the end of January to discuss Communications 214 and 215. We kept both of these communications in committee. Communication 214 regarding the Central Congregational Church and the CPA funds, we were waiting for the preservation restriction to come to Planning Development Committee on the church. And regarding Communication 215, the Colby Farren Open Space Beautification, Director Port mentioned that they were working on an open space plan with the Conservation Commission, and we said we would wait to get that before we received and filed this letter, so more to come later on this year.
Any questions for the chair? I have one. On the zoning amendment for short-term rental, has the planning board set a hearing on that?
March, the 11th.
March 11th, okay. All right, so that will be a joint meeting with your committee?
Correct.
All right. If there's nothing further from Planning and Development, we move to Public Safety. Anything to report? Counselor McCauley?
Yes, number of items, a motion on Communication 198, the Middle Street parking curb cuts. We received a letter from the president of the Middle Street Condominium Trust, reiterating the restrictions that were put on, on the approval. They wanted to make sure that all were aware of the restrictions of the curb cuts going forward. The committee talked about this, our recommendation is that we receive and file, while also asking the clerk to send a copy of this to both the planning board and the ZBA. That vote was 3 to 0.
Any questions or further comments? So, the motions to receive and file, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to 0. Please continue.
Motion to approve Communication 218, Town and Country Half Marathon.
Second.
Thank you. Rich Morell from UKN Run was president of the race, he has run a number of races here and coordinated. All of the package was complete, all the signatures were there, the map was there, and the insurance was there as well. We voted to approve that, 3 to 0.
Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, motion is to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved.
Motion to approve and move forward, the Appointment 140, Dr. Robert Slocum for the Board of Health. We had a discussion with Dr. Slocum, he told us a little bit about the work that they were doing in terms of prevention and working with youth. We also tried to expand his discussion from the Health Department, including sanitation, water quality, protecting the water resources as well, it was good discussion. We've recommended that the council approve it, 3 to 0. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Dr. Slocum? And a roll call is in order.
Mr. President, the second was by...
Counselor McCauley.
Thank you. Roll call for the approval of Dr. Slocum. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel President Ragman?
Yes. Chair McCauley?
A motion to take the next three, Communication 223, 224, and 225, all together, they're all races. We had a discussion with all of those involved.
Oh, let's see, you've got a second.
Second.
All right.
We had a discussion with all of the race coordinators individually that night, their packages are complete, their signatures are complete, their insurance files are there, and the maps are included, so we recommended to approve, 3 to 0.
Further questions, comments, debate? All those in favor of collectively approving Communications, does it say Applications 223, 224, and 225, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, 11 to 0. Anything else?
That is it.
Thank you. Public Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to approve Communication 206, poll hearing, Bayberry Road.
Second.
The city was approached by National Grid, by a gentleman named Chris Wellington, who's one of N-Grid's, National Grid's engineers, late last year, asking for permission to do this project. That permission was granted, or requested, I should say, through DPS, but because of the depth and the breadth of opening the public way, was referred to the city council. You may recall that we then held that over into the new term to allow a little bit more time. We were basically at the end of the term, and this project wasn't slated to happen until the summertime anyway, so there's a little bit of time. So that's how we got to where we are today, in terms of what the project is. Long story short, is that back in the 70s and 80s, they used to just dig a hole and dump the wire in the hole and then fill it back up with dirt, and that was good and well for the 70s and 80s, but the reality is that over time, obviously, the ground deteriorates the cable, which, which leads to reliability and safety issues. And that's why they are going around to these neighborhoods where these kinds of things were done, in an effort to replace them. The first thing they try and do to remedy the issue is to fix the cable, if they can, without having to fix it, without having to dig it up or do conduit or anything. They'll try and inject the cable. The gentleman from National Grid explained that they tried that in this case, and the cable is simply no good. It's basically out of its lifetime, life cycle, cable's aged out. So next step is to replace it. Again, back in the old days, they would come back and dig a new trench, go all the way around the neighborhood with it, and put the, put the conduit in it, and put the cable. But they've actually evolved since that time, and now they, instead of doing, digging a trench, they basically use a, some folks know it as a ditch witch, or something like that, to basically do directional drill. So they, they just open up one hole, and then try and dig underground across in order to minimize the disruption to the street. So that's what they are proposing to do here, to put the conduit in via directional drill. There will be penetrations in the street and/or the sidewalk for test pits, intersections, and so forth, but once they have the, kind of the beginning and the ends, they don't have to, in theory, unless there's any circumstances that require, dig anything else. They use a combination of plans that are available to know where other utilities are, and ground sonar, ground radar, in order to determine how they're not going to hit other things. Okay, so that's what the project is. In terms of when, and a couple of other key things, we're talking about summertime in this project. We're talking about a five-person crew being out on site and doing this with a handful of pieces of equipment, nothing huge, but there will be some impacts, there will be some staging. They will try and minimize that as much as possible in terms of disruption to the neighborhood and parking. Residents should not expect any power disruptions in general during the project, except for one time, and that's when the new cables finally installed, the cutover from the new to the, from the old to the new. And National Grid has assured us that they will provide adequate, at least a week's time to let residents know, and they typically block a window from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM, that they tell residents that's when you'll experience a power loss, until they can reconnect the, the old one, pardon me, disconnect the old one and connect the new one. Chris Wellington, as I mentioned, was the engineer from National Grid. He did a 10. He's done 40 of these projects so far. We did inquire about a couple of other things. Number one is, unfortunately, you cannot coordinate with other utilities. We asked if, you know, could Verizon come out and do their lines too, and Comcast? These are all different entities, they're all on their own schedules. He said in his experience, he's only seen one where they came close together, and that was a year apart. So that's the best you can hope for. There will be a police detail where, if there was one necessary, they will fix any sidewalks that they damage, they will patch any road that they have to. If they are required to damage a resident's driveway, because that happens to be where an intersection or an issue exists, they will, they will cut the driveway back to that point and do the entire thing up to that point. Residents are welcome to work with the contractor on site if they want to chip in and do the rest of their driveway altogether. I just want to note for you that in this, you're also approving a new poll. There does have to be a new poll in order to serve this, so that's part of this approval. It's basically at the entryway to the, to the, to the development. It's a loop. It's not in a controversial spot, and it is required. Once this new thing is in, we're talking about 100-year lifetime is what they talk about, so we will all be long gone before this has to be done again. And by the way, when it has to be done again, you just pull cable through the new conduit. You don't have to do the whole rigmarole of getting the conduit in the ground. And so I do want my colleagues to know that we did have a full committee meeting, myself, this is my committee report, I was there, Consul Tantar and Consul Shan, my colleagues. I did send a letter to all the abutters a month before the meeting, so everybody knew. Only two people showed up, but everybody knew about it. And again, National Grid will do further notifications once they solidify the date of beginning, and then when they get to that time of knowing when the cutoff is. So it asks for your approval on it. It's a good project, neighbors are in support, and I think we wrapped our head around what the impacts will be, and it's, it's a well-thought-out endeavor.
Other comments? Councilor McCauley?
As a Woodside councillor, I also was in attendance.
Sorry, yes.
That's okay. And I have also spoken with various constituents and residents who are there. Everyone's all for it, they just have noted the communication and, and hope that it's crisp. And Chris Wellington has assured it, it would be. Thank you.
Other comments? I just, I just have a question, and thanks for the presentation, I, I know a lot more now, but do we have any decent maps of what's underneath that street? Does it say "we, the city"? Or we just kind of, you're saying they had radar, they're just kind of guessing? I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get at is, wouldn't this be a good opportunity to create a GIS layer for the city, so we don't have to guess next time that Verizon comes back? Did that come up at all?
It did not come up in our discussions. I mean, National Grid presented their own map, so I think they all try and manage their own stuff. He said, you know, we don't exactly know what we're going to find when we go in there, so it is a bit more hodgepodgey than I think we'd like to say, yes, we've got a brilliant map that shows everything. There are requirements for separation, and they will adhere to those requirements because you can't put things too close together, not just for safety, but also because they don't work right, particularly if you put cable and, and power. So as far as the city's records, I don't know the answer, but we can certainly inquire with the Planning Department, I think would be the right place to ask.
All right, thank you. Anything else? The motion on the floor is to approve. We can do this, this, it can be a voice vote, I'm pretty sure, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to 0. Thank you. Anything further?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to approve Order 165, Green Group LLC.
Second.
So this is, as, as you know, folks who've been on the council a little while, we get these from time to time. Groups do need to, or companies do need to apply to the city council to have a license to open up the road. This one comes to us by way of Tony Fornari, and we did meet about this in committee. Green Group is a reputable firm. In this case, they actually are specifically looking to work on Colby Farm Lane, the new, the new development, the new project. You can see some details about it. Director Fornari did give them a positive comment, and then they've got some, a variety of different references that they provided. They would be able to work on this project under the direction of DPS, and then other things in the city. The licenses we provide are good for one construction season or effectively, so they could come back again if they wanted to.
Thank you. Any other comments from councillors? Councilor Khan?
Sorry, I just noticed this now. Council President, I just, that, that insurance, in terms of the expiration date, you're the one that always finds these, but January 1st, 2020, do we need that extended if it's going to be through the summer work? A question.
Well, I, I, yes, we can ask, I mean, they obviously are required. They also have to post a bond, which they did, so what I'll do is I'll just make the motion to amend, and subject to receipt of an updated.
Insurance policy.
Insurance policy, thank you.
Is there a second on the motion? Thank you. So on the, on the motion to amend, all, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and then the underlying motion, any discussion on that? No, motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Anything further? Chair Reed.
That's it for Public Utilities, Mr. President. More about directional drilling.
Committee on Rules, what's on that report? Chair Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the committee met this evening to discuss the Rule 9F that was brought forward by Consul Agaman, that is the motion to postpone indefinitely. Now, we, instead of just simple majority, going to a supermajority of, so we discussed that in committee, we're not going to take it out of committee tonight. The reason we're not going to take it out of committee is because I'm actually working on going through all of the rules. There's a couple of things in the rules that need tweaking. Some things are outdated and so on and so forth, so I'm going through those, and what will happen is that the clerk will come out to you and ask you to, if you have any ideas or any, any thoughts about the rules, to get them back to the clerk. That'll come to me, and then the next packet will be the updated rules and any of your suggestions. Those will be, go, they'll go to committee, they'll be discussed, and then we'll, by the end of next month, we'll be able to debate all those rule changes on the floor, if that makes any sense to you all. So that's what's going to happen, so this is back in the committee, or still stays in committee, this particular rule, and we'll discuss it all when all the changes come in. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Chair Vogel? Seeing none. So please look for that email from the clerk and give him all your ideas so we can consolidate them. That's it for committee reports. Good of the order.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilor Connell.
Yeah, at our last meeting, we selected March 3rd as a date to hold our special permit hearing for the expansion at the Anna Jakes Hospital. Remember, the city council is a special permit granting authority for expansion within our statutes by a healthcare facility, which Anna Jakes certainly is. That's Election Day.